I'd like to call the February 6th meeting of the Board of Education to order. It's 7 o'clock and I will say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you everyone for coming out on this rainy, cold night. We will have comments from citizens relative to this budget.
Hi, my name is Susan McVay. I live at 20 Monroe Street, Parkdale, Connecticut, and I am president of the local 1996 Union for the Paraprofessionals in the district. I work at West Vine Street School. I've been in the district for 21 years. I just wanted to let you know that after 21 years, my net salary this year was $16,788. You have budgeted $1,918,608 for pairs for next year. And we have currently 93 pairs in the district. And if you divide that into that number, that makes about $20,000 a year for pairs. Teaching creates all other professions, which I think everybody knows. And as a paraprofessional, I feel that I am an extension of a teacher. And I am worth money. I'm worth money, not only because, I mean, I have a degree, but some people don't have a degree, it does not matter. What we put into working with the children in this town is way above and beyond. And nobody in town realizes how hard it is to work in the public schools these days. I love my job. I wouldn't have been here 21 years and I wouldn't be in it for the money if I didn't love my job and love every kid that I've touched. And I've touched quite a few. So also, I'd just like to say, our job description for paraprofessional, how much do I have a set time?
You've got five minutes.
Oh geez.
You can do it soon.
Well, it's three pages long for a paraprofessional. But I'm just going to read you the first, I'm just going to read you the first paragraph in our job description. Responsible for, under the supervision of certified licensed staff, feeding, lifting, toileting, including toilet training, diaper changing, and other hygiene duties. Preparing and assisting with classroom activities, including one-on-one social and academic assistance, proper handling of bodily fluids and compliance with OSHA and Board of Education regulations. Preparing and utilizing specialized materials and/or equipment, such as communication devices, wheelchairs, visual schedules, et cetera. Assisting with non-instructional tasks as needed, such as organizing class materials, writing correspondence, in assignment books, copying materials, et cetera, et cetera. Assisting in administration of therapies under the supervision of a certified therapist may be required. Performing other duties relating to bus loading/unloading, securing students into car seats, playground recess control, lunchroom supervision. Also, let me read one other paragraph. Additionally, specialized training may be utilized or needed, such as sign language, ABA, EpiPen use, computer program training, communication device training, and therapy equipment training. Again, we go from preschool to 12th grade. That's only two paragraphs out of a three-page job description that we do. And the pairs in this district, the starting pay for a paraprofessional, and some of my pairs have been here 10 years and they still make this, is $15.02 an hour. In the year 2023, $15 will be minimum wage. So you figure 2%, they won't even be, they'll be what, a dollar and a half above minimum wage by then, according to the schedule of how raises are being given. And I know it's not about raises and whatever, I'm just giving you numbers. So our lowest paid is 5002, our highest paid is 1792. In Stonington, a secretary starts at $21.47 an hour. There, they top out for the four-year contract at $25.12 an hour. Our laborers, which I'm assuming are the kids that come in in the summer and cut the grass, I'm not sure what they are, but they start at $18.72 an hour and they cap out at $19.85. Our bottom custodian starts at $23.15 an hour. And they top out at $25 an hour. Again, we paraprofessionals make $15 an hour to start and cap this year at 1792. We're up for negotiating in May and June this year for our next four-year contract. We've looked into a couple of other districts and we saw that the last contract for Griswold, their pair started at 1759 and they capped at 2124. Montville's pair started at 1898 and they capped at 1974. Waterford started at 1450 and they capped at $20.16 per hour. So I just am here to make everyone aware that the equity in salaries in Stonington, even against other districts, is not an inequity. Because I don't think I'm better than a custodian, I know I'm not. And I'm not better than a secretary and they're not better than me. So I'm wondering, why is there such an inequity in salaries in the town of Stonington amongst non-certified staff? Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Are there any other comments related to this budget? Blunt, just remember the five-minute timeline.
Thanks, it's Blunt White from Stonington. Just a couple of big-picture comments. In your narrative, there's a big story that's not really talked too much about, but that's the decline in enrollment. And that's, you know, just driven the closing of a school or consolidation of the school. And so there could be more facts and figures about that because that drives not only the big picture, but what about on a per capita basis? When we're talking about what the, you know, the number of students divided into the cost of a program or the cost of teachers. You can start looking at metrics like that on a per capita basis. And that's sort of one of the points I wanted to make. So if we were looking at historically over five years, what's been going on with administrative salaries and also teachers' salaries. And that would include the cost of paraprofessionals too. That's mixed in with the numbers that I've got. So the, over the past five years, administrative costs, that would be administrative salary plus secretarial salary, increased by 43% over five years. That works out to about 8% a year compounded. And during that time, enrollment declined by 13% over those five years. And during that same period, teaching costs only increased by 5%, which compounded is like 1% a year. So 1% a year was what the teachers', teaching cost was compounding at. But administrative costs were compounding at 8% for a period of five years. The numbers are not as, are worse when you look at it on a per capita basis, you know, dividing by the actual number of students. So on a cost-per-student basis over the five-year, this is for the period ending the year that we just completed, June 30, 2019. So that's where we have actuals for. We're not talking about budget to budget. We're talking about comparing actuals to actuals. So on a cost-for-student basis over that five-year period, the administration costs increased by 63% or compounded at 10% a year. And the cost for teaching grew at 20%, compounding at 4% a year. So the numbers look better for teaching, but they look, you know, worse for administrative expenses. And so the question, you know, when I was on Board of Finance for the last three budget cycles, and I don't remember any of this weaving into the story that I was hearing in your narrative book or in the presentations, that administrative costs were increasing at that kind of rate and teaching costs were not. And so that's really the point I wanted to make. You could improve your narrative by talking about actuals and talking about what the per capita basis metric would be given the decline in enrollment. That concludes my remarks.
Thank you.
If anybody has a question, I'd be happy to answer if anybody has a question.
Right now, it's just comments. We don't do conversation back and forth. Thank you. Any more questions from citizens or comments? Next, the budget discussion for 2021.
I would like to reflect on some changes since our last presentation. We have some handouts I'd like to refer to. The first one is the big spreadsheet. Of course, as soon as we see this, we all turn to the last page and see what the percent is. Last time it was, well, two times ago, it was 3.48%. The last meeting, we were able to reduce that to 3.05. And the board asked that we even, we looked further. And what we were able to do is reduce, we have a dean position that's going away. That person would bump into a teaching position. And either that, if that person comes back to teaching, then another teacher would leave. So keeping the staffing the same, which is what we said, we were able to reduce one teaching position. So the recommendation from the administration would be to approve this budget to go forward at 2.88% increase with that one position change. The next thing we have are some answers to some questions that the board has presented. And I'll ask Mr. Shuttle to present these. He's the one that looked up the answers to these. Gary?
Sure, thank you. The first question was in regards to a service contract with ABS. And the question really was, was it related to the new buildings as well? The answer is yes. It's a service contract so that ABS would monitor all facilities, including this one, 24 hours a day. And so if they found something that wasn't working right or they found something that could be tweaked for energy efficiency, they would. And so it would be 24/7/365, all buildings. The next question was in regards to M-Corps services. Was this for the new buildings as well? Yes, there's a little bit going on with the new buildings, but the majority would be spent, the largest portion would be spent for the three existing facilities here, Stonington Middle School and the high school. Probably more at the high school than in the other facility within the district. And there was a question about some of the extracurricular athletics curriculum. Wanted to know what this was for. Combination of things. Part of it was administrative in services. We had some class activities. We had some crew, Link Crew is not the crew you think of rowing on the water. Link Crew is having ninth graders come to the high school before school starts and doing an orientation. They've actually now started going down to the middle school and giving the eighth graders an orientation of what they might expect when they go to high school in the upcoming year. So that's what that is. I was confused for a couple of years myself when I saw Link Crew and I said, okay, what's this all about? And that's what it is. Question was about buses for the curriculum. As we said in the last go-round, this is for summer school at Stonington Middle School and also for the summer academy that we have in the district. As I stated last time, this was taken out of Title I funds for the current year. They will no longer be taken out of title funds. All the fund, gonna rephrase that. Those funds are being shifted to wages and salaries in the upcoming year. So we don't have those funds available in the upcoming year. Next question was about an increase in FICA. And what we do is we look at the positions that are associated with FICA. Only full-time, only positions 30 hours or more in the district have FICA taken out and FICA spent by the district. So we look at those at each and every building. And so sometimes we'll have an additional full-time employee or two additional full-time employees. And so the FICA has to increase when that happens. The next one was, again, in relation to pair salaries going up. You'll see that has changed in your detailed handouts now. The staff and I went over para-positions two days ago. And what we found is we hadn't put the pairs in the right schools in actuality. Most of the pairs that we changed the numbers for should have been under special education. And we didn't do that. So we found two or three or four pairs and behavior technicians that should have been under special education. And so we now move them to special education. So you'll see a decrease under Dean's Mill, West Vine, Stonington Middle School. The dollar amounts stay the same because it's person for person. And so we didn't really change FICA only because there's not a lot of money associated with those positions. And really, throughout the year, people come and go. So it's, in my opinion, it's going to almost be a wash. FICA is not going to increase or decrease because we did that. It's just primarily where FICA might have been budgeted in the school itself. And so for the most part, the FICA amounts will stay the same. So I just wanted to make you aware of that. You'll see those changes for pairs in the schools because of what we looked at again in the last couple of days. So those were the only questions.
I do have one more question. I'm not sure, Gary, if it's for you to answer or, and I'm sorry I didn't ask it in advance. On the, on the page eight on the large spreadsheet, there's an added teaching/stipend positions, additional positions at Stonington Middle School and elementary schools, a new teacher contract. Is that, this, does that relate to these extracurricular activities? That number, it increased 26,000?
Yes, yes.
That's what that is?
Yeah. Consolidated the two middle schools, the asking positions for the current year. And so we actually revised the positions, not necessarily the dollar amounts, based on the new teacher contract coming in. So the dollar amounts basically remain the same, but the amount for certain positions change up has to do with mostly the position, the positions at the middle school and also the club positions now.
Are those stipend? Is that what you, the stipend positions are those extracurricular, those after? Great, the clubs, thank you.
A third document you have in front of you tonight is the smaller spreadsheet. Mr. Morehouse had asked us to do some research into various positions from the last five years, from 2014, 15 till this year and then projected for next year, that things are included in this budget. You can see, we divided this into teachers, classroom teachers and the other specials teachers. And you could see the trends that we have since 2014, 15. Really, the one major reduction in addition to the classroom teachers that did go down quite a bit because of declining enrollment is the reduction of the Mandarin program. The next section is other certified positions. And that's remained fairly steady. We did move a guidance position from 2014 into the AP of guidance. So there was that change. We didn't reduce a guidance person though. The next section is classified. You can see that's been fairly steady. The one difference would be from this year to next year, we've eliminated one maintenance position and made that into a plant staff supervisor position. And then the administrators went from six positions at the, well, you can see the totals at the bottom, 15 positions, went up to 18 positions. And that included the consolidation, the assistant principals and the dean positions. We added the AP of guidance at the high school. We also, the asterix there, it's important, that's a, we were paying hourly stipends to a number of people, a number of teachers. And we weren't, that wasn't the most efficient way to help with the elementary curriculum needs. So that was made into a staff position, as you know. We filled that a few months ago. So the, basically what happened, from 2014, 15, we added a position a couple of years later because we had a combination finance and operations. You remember Bill King was in that position. And quite frankly, Bill was doing a great job, but he had, it wasn't working. And so we split that back into an operations and a director of finance position. So that added one to that category. Then when we did the consolidation, we eliminated, oh, Greg left, the one principal position. But we added two dean positions. That was two years ago. Then this year, we eliminated one of those dean positions. And the recommendation is to reduce another one so we wouldn't have any more dean positions next year. So that's why the up and down. So basically, we've added, well, you can see what we've done. We've added the one elementary specialist position. We've added the director of finance position. We eliminated one middle school principal. We added two deans and gradually have eliminated both of those positions. So that's the summary for Mr. Morehouse and everyone else. I think, Jack, that was what you'd asked for.
Yeah, thank you. Follow-up question or later?
Just one, one other comment. There was a request for our copies of our attorney bills. And we are working on that. I talked to our attorney this evening who's looking at those. There were some confidential student information on those, but we should have those by either tomorrow or Monday for the board.
So like, for example, for example, at Dean's Mill, you added a program facilitator. I think that's the title of the person.
For the elementary, yes.
Yeah. Where would that person be listed? Because I,
That's the change from hourly stipends to the position.
Oh, okay.
We went, we call it a district level, it's elementary level. And that used to be paid for, that's all out of Title I money.
Okay.
But it was paid hourly in stipends with six or eight different people. And it really wasn't effective. So we consolidated that into one position.
Okay.
Yes.
And how many people do we have in that type of curriculum positions? How many, how many of these seven people are related to that type of position in that district office? Is that all of them?
Just the one.
Just one?
Oh, there are, yes, two. The other ones are either teaching positions like Jen Bausch. Yeah, so they would be enlisted under teachers.
Oh, they would be, okay.
We just have the one.
So could you tell me what makes up those seven? Be a little bit more specific in those job titles?
There's three of them right there.
Oh, so it's just,
Myself.
Okay. Oh, so it's,
Two back there.
Fabulous, thank you.
It's all six of us are here.
All righty, thanks. Jack, did you have another question? I thought you did.
I had a housekeeping question. Can I, can I say that now?
Sure.
So during the last meeting, I was looking over the numbers and then I had a Board of Finance member approach me and ask me some questions. And unfortunately, I couldn't answer those questions. And I think there's something that we can do as a district that would really help out. When we look at the actual, 2018, 2019, actual expenditures compared to budget, there are some items on here that, for example, like the building admin salary, it looks like we went over budget by $120,000. Now, I could answer that one. I actually knew the answer. We added the dean position at the middle school. But some of these other ones, I, you know, I just don't know. And I think it would be super helpful if the administration could, when it's say over $10,000, $15,000, could put an explanation next to why we went over by that amount of money and where the funds came from. That would be super helpful. Particularly to a Board of Education member that doesn't want to get caught not being able to answer a question from a citizen.
Well, you can see the last column in, on the big spreadsheet, Gary has made a summary comment if something has gone up or down. Is, in addition to that,
No, I'm looking at this one. This is, I'm looking at a different page.
I, I do agree. And this is helpful annually, but I think we're talking on more of a regular basis throughout the year.
Correct.
So that we can understand and explain to somebody why there is, why there's a big switch in the budget line item.
Correct, yes, yeah.
That sounds reasonable. We'll, we'll take a look at that. What, you know, things happen. Budgets are not supposed to be set. They're your best estimate, they're your plan.
No, I,
And we could have two students come in that have special needs of $200,000. And we, rather than going back to the Board of Finance and asking for that, we reprioritize, we don't buy something, we don't fill a position. There's constant movement, almost daily in the district. We will look at the, these are the monthly reports, exactly.
Correct, yeah.
We'll, we'll work on that and try to come up with some more explanation as to that. But it's not, you can't always say, well, this dollar went from here to here. It's, well, we, we cancel, we don't hire a position or we, we have to pay for the outplacement now, knowing that we're going to have a retirement of a custodian in April and it's going to work out. So we can say, these are things that have gone up and these are things that have gone down. But it's not necessarily a dollar-for-dollar kind of thing. But we will look at better explanations on a monthly basis.
Yeah, I just think it gives a little bit more transparency. And it's the people's money. And it's important. And we're really just asking to do this after the fact. It's, you know, just a simple explanation. This is why, you know, tuition, we took in $350,000 more in tuition. It was unexpected, you know. But where did that money go?
Maybe just changing the format of our monthly, the monthly notes that we get. I think maybe that, that would be maybe a good spot to do.
That would be great, all right. Thank you.
I am going to talk about crew as well, but it does concern rowing and how it relates to the budget. Earlier this week, I did send an email to the board concerning rowing. And Alyssa and Alexa and Craig responded with information that will be really helpful to my ongoing focus on rowing at Stonington High School. I'd like to continue to push for new support and awareness for sport that is both poetically free and pragmatically disciplined. I do have a personal interest in rowing. I used to row competitively and now just recreationally. So I do know, close up, the importance and the benefits of rowing. I realize that there are many who are not aware of the package deal of mind, body, and soul delivered by the engagement in the sport. But a rower is aware and colleges are very aware. Colleges know how rowing changes lives. A disciplined rower is a disciplined learner and a disciplined human being. And it is important to know that each year, our rowing students are rewarded scholarships from prestigious colleges. So my goal is to raise awareness here on the board and inspire a deserved respect and support of this sport. I've discovered that, yes, 20 years ago, rowing was considered just a club. But now, as a three-season varsity sport, the athletic department no longer categorizes rowing as a club. It's a respected varsity sport. I also found out that 60 to 80 student rowers each year, which is the usual amount of rowers that participate, must pay $600 to just participate. The school only covers 25% of the sport's annual cost. The cost last year totaled $71,000. The rowers covered the 75% by organizing a lot of fundraisers. This arrangement just seemed inequitable to me. And it inspired my questions to the board earlier this week. How much per student rower do we pay relative to other student participants in sports? And how much do we pay for coaching, administration, and travel for crew relative to other sports? I hope to find out the answers to these questions and more questions that I have about rowing. about rowing. Therefore, to that end, I'd like to begin to raise our awareness as a board for this sport of rowing. Bottom line, I think that it is underfunded and understated. I'll ask student rowers, coaches, interested parties from the community to come and educate us on rowing's many merits as a sport and a culture. And then I hope, we as a board, will be convinced to support and better fund the sport of rowing here at the high school.
Craig and Fruch, any questions or comments on the proposed budget? Go ahead, Jack.
Couple things, thank you, Heidi. I just wanna kind of, I agree with everything she said. Crew, I personally know several students who participated in crew have, who have either gotten into the school that they had hoped to get into or received scholarships that were, you know, full scholarships to various universities around the country. It's, it's a tremendous sport. It builds character, it builds a sense of how important it is to stick to it and stick to your goals. It's a difficult sport, and I would be very interested in exploring for, you know, doing the further funding of the crew program.
Perhaps we can get a breakdown of the different costs of the different sports from the athletic director?
Yeah. And then my last comment is a little bit about, I'm gonna start off general and bring it back to Stonington. In our country, since 1950 to roughly about 2010, we've seen about a 96% increase in students. Over that period of time, we've had a 252% increase in teachers. But we've had, this is in our country, not in Stonington, a 702% increase in administration and other staff associated with the administration. It's quite an increase, and they call it administrative bloat. Now, I don't think we have a bad case of it here in Stonington, but I do think, you know, when I look at the budget, I really feel that having a third administrator at the middle school is excessive. And when we, when the vote came up to have a fourth, I voted against it with that downing, and I continue to feel like it's, it's one too many. Part of that comes from my own background. When I grew up here in Stonington, I attended Dean's Mill, and back then, we had Mr. Scary and Mr. Conrad Burden, I'll never forget him, he smoked cigars in school, how can you forget that? But he was my math teacher during the day and then did evaluations and was vice principal during the second part of the day. So I guess what I'm trying to say and ask is, do we, can we do more job sharing within our community like that where we, now, I'm not advocating that we have a halftime principal at any of the schools. I think we need two full-time principals. But for those additional duties that Mr. Smith talked about, you know, are there other people in the school that could handle those, those duties? And could we then reduce down to two, the number with, I think, the appropriate number for a school that size? And then look at perhaps focusing, taking that money and maybe giving a little bit of a raise to the, to the paraprofessionals? Maybe looking at doing world language at the elementary school? Maybe looking at doing a little bit of funding, because one administrative salary is, it's a lot of money. So that's my question. I feel like we could do a little bit more with that money. I'm raising this question as a, as a board of ed member, but also as a taxpayer in town that runs a small business. I pay $40,000 a year in taxes, and I want the most from my money, and an extra administrator at Mystic Middle School, or sorry, at Stonington Middle School, I don't feel like is, is the best use of our money. Now, I know that's just my opinion, but I feel strongly about it. Thank you.
Any other comments to that? Jack, I know that coming into this budget season, I did have the same philosophy or thought on that position at the middle school. Mr. Smith's presentation last week did, did change my mind temporarily. That difference in the staff's happiness, their, their climate, and the concern that they need one more year. So I guess I'm trying to not screw in the light bulb for them. I'm trying to let, they, they did a great job this year, and the recommendations, as hesitant as I was as well, did, did work. And if we're guaranteed that this position will then be reduced the following year, and I liked the idea that Dr. Riley mentioned in our board letter, that, you know, from now through October, let's look at how we need to adjust our staffing and preparation and make a plan for the four years out for the reduced enrollment. And I'm sure a lot of that, I would think that administration positions would be something we would be looking at. But I agree, I do have a little concern, but I guess I'm going to go with what Mr. Smith said because he really has turned that climate around.
Just a little follow-up.
Go ahead.
Don't take this to be argumentative at all.
No.
But I also listed, listened very intently. And as you recall, when we looked at the, the climate surveys from Pocketuck and Mystic Middle before the consolidation, the staff at Pocketuck Middle was, was pretty happy and content compared to Mystic Middle. And I think, I may be reading between the lines, but when you put the two schools together and you bring over a staff like that, you're bound to have, you're mixing some happy people with some unhappy people, but overall, I think, you know, I'm not surprised that the satisfaction rate and, and the, the feeling that things are getting better because of the consolidation and so on, I'm not surprised about that. So I, I think it's natural for managers, when they look around and they look at the job in front of them, to say, you know what would really help me? Another manager. And I know I would love to have another manager in my job. But it's not what's best for kids. What's best for kids, in my opinion, are smaller class sizes, more programming, funding things that, that make kids want to go to school, whether it's crew or, or band or art, or, you know, all those things that are super important to keeping kids engaged in school. That's what's important. And so I'm only saying this because that's what I think is best for kids. Another administrator, another manager, I don't see how that really touches the lives, maybe indirectly, but if it's a matter of doing more evaluations and you need another administrator, that's why, that's why I asked that question earlier on about, well, maybe there's someone else in the building that could help with that. But this is driven by what I think is best for kids. Thank you.
Just a clarification, when you say another administrator, the recommend, my recommendation is to actually reduce one administrator. We did one, this year we reduced, and then my recommendation is to reduce another next year and not to reduce two. I think the study that the board and the administration can do in the, in the early fall, September, October, in looking at class size, support staff, administrative staff, all staff, and come up with a multi-year plan going out in the future is necessary. But having some stability, we've been through a lot of change, and it's working, it's working really well. Teachers appreciate it, parents appreciate it, students, most of all, appreciate it. Talk to them about their encore classes and some of the things that we've added. It's really, it's really a wonderful program, and I really don't want to, reducing the administrative staff by 50% in one year is an awful lot. Gradually doing it, I think, is appropriate, and that's the, that has been the recommendation.
You know, I don't often, I understand what you're saying, Dr. Riley. And, you know, you've done a lot of really good things for the school system, and I want to point out one. The encore classes are terrific. When I talk about finding a reason to go to school every day, well, those encore classes have been a real boost, I think. Kids seem to really enjoy them. I'm getting really good feedback from parents and from students. But for a school that size, if we compare it to East Lime, Old Lime, it's, it's excessive, and it's a lot of money. I don't know what the salary would be. I'm guessing $125,000. I don't know. You can tell me. But I think that money could be spent elsewhere in a more productive way, and I'll let it go at that. I promise to not be argumentative with you, but that's just my feeling. Thank you.
Are there any other opinions on this topic from any other board members?
Just a reminder, tonight, we're just looking if there's any direction as far as the, this big spreadsheet, the 2.88%. If there are, we need to know tonight. If not, they'll come back to you for approval at the, on the 13th and then move forward to the board of finance.
Do we have opinions on the 2.88 spreadsheet? Thank you for looking into that. I was not comfortable with the increase of over 3%, so I'm appreciative of you looking into that and reducing that. I am happy with the 2.88. I do, I know the paras have their negotiations after the budget season, so I don't know that we can include that into the 2021, but I would be very hopeful that going forward, their negotiations would include a salary that's comparable to their position. Are other board members content or ready to go forward with the recommendation of the 2.88 budget?
I am.
Okay, so direction is to bring that budget forward, the February 13th meeting, next week?
I will be on vacation at the Hotel Del Coronado in San Diego, wishing you all the best.
I do want to add that Candace will be heading into surgery next week. We all wish her well. There, if you would like to be included, an email, a Google Doc sheet for helping with dropping off any meals or anything on that line, please send me an email, and I will put you in contact with the person responsible for that. At that, there's no more comments on the budget. I make a motion, can I have a motion to adjourn?
No motion.
Second? Did you second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, everybody.